Call for a meeting to order, roll call please.
Mayor Rankin?
Here.
Council Vice Mayor Walter?
Here.
Councilmember Woolridge?
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Here.
Councilmember Gleens?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Wall?
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, we'll stand for a moment of silence and pledge allegiance. Keep in mind tonight, a little girl that was unfortunately died of a traffic accident. She just graduated from here last year. Also, keep in mind, a girl many of you knew as Holly Hall. She's been deployed to Iraq, so she's a local girl out of South -- she's living or stationed in South Carolina, and we'd like to just keep her in your prayers for safety. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You should pull it. Next agenda item is call to the public for public comment on issues within jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call of the public unless the matters are properly noted for discussion or legal action. At this time, I do not have any requests. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to stand up and say anything and call the public? Seeing no movement, our close call to the public.
Presentations. Introduction of the 2016-2017 Town of Florence Information Technology Interns. Mr. Schaefer.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Tonight, I'm here to present information to council regarding the Information Technology Student Internship Program and introduce both participants, participating students, to council. To give a brief background, the Town of Florence Information Technology Department was looking for ways to collaborate with Florence High School regarding the use of their media studio for creation of government access channel and website video content. Many municipalities provide some form of internship or volunteer opportunities for teenagers, which can be a great way to develop their skills, help define a solid career path, and create interest in local government. We wanted to do the same and made a decision to reach out to Florence High School to start a dialogue. Through multiple meetings and open discussions with deputy town manager and Florence High School staff members, we determined the best partnership would be to utilize student interns that were currently participating in the Florence High School Multimedia Broadcasting class. Students enrolled in this class are under the supervision and direction of Jim Nephew. In class, they record, edit, and broadcast their go-for news, which can be viewed on their Florence High School website, public service announcements, school sports, and other related functions. They are skilled in microphone camera setup, teleprompter programming, audio/video editing and broadcasting, multimedia content creation, and much more. This makes the student internship a mutually beneficial relationship. The Town of Florence will benefit from the expertise of fourth-year students who are specializing in multimedia creation content, content creation, and studio recording, in addition to being granted full access to the Florence High School media studio. The students will benefit from the opportunity to directly apply their training by providing professional programming for town audio/video and town website content. Furthermore, they will be assisting with recording, editing, and broadcasting the town council meetings and various other town meetings, which will subjectively expose them to government processes and proceedings. As this program is in its infancy, it will continue to grow and we will continue to build upon the program. We aim to provide relevant and better overall quality content to our citizens through the government access channel and town website. We will learn and grow from citizen feedback regarding this content, provide additional training for students, and help develop a solid career path for their future and strive to get youth more involved in local government. With that being said, I'm proud to introduce two students currently participating in this program. Austin?
This is Austin Rodriguez. He's our first student in the program. He's a senior at Florence High School and is currently in his fourth year of multimedia broadcasting. He brings a wealth of broadcasting experience to the table. He works hard to streamline broadcasting processes, all while providing professional quality audio/video effects.
I'm Austin Rodriguez. Like Trent said, I'm a four-year multimedia student. I also competed in FBLA, Future Business Leaders of America. I competed in business video production. I placed fourth in state and 72nd in nationals. I thank you for this opportunity to improve my video and production skills.
That sounds pretty good. Now let me ask you a question. Does this go before your 40 hours of community service work that you have to perform?
No, I have already completed all my community service.
You have to do that too? Okay, well that shows dedication to getting that done. Austin, congratulations on your placing in the state and also in the national.
Our second student is Quah Nguyen. He's a senior at Florence High School. Quah, come on up. He's currently in his fourth year of multimedia broadcasting as well. He exhibits an expertise in audio/video programming as well as multimedia content creation.
Good evening, council. My name is Quah, and as Trent mentioned, I am a fourth-year media student at Florence High School. And next year, I will be graduating. ASU has given me a four-year scholarship for video games, and the only downside with that is I have to take computer engineering, which I love, but I want to go into business field. With this opportunity, it will help me like a lot with the career I'm going into, which is computer program, as of right now. Other than this job, I have a side job, which is I compete nationwide and outside of the U.S. in video game tournaments, which I have won money from.
All right.
I would like to thank all of you for this opportunity to improve my skills in editing, programming, and just improving my future, pretty much.
Oh, Quah, we appreciate what you're doing, and we hope you learn a lot, and just don't forget you went to Florence High School, graduated there, and you worked for the town. Everywhere you go in life, remember the Town of Florence.
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions council may have.
I have a question. Can we see the high school website on the town website? Is there a link there for it?
There currently is not, but it was something we could definitely add to the site.
That'd be good. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Excellent opportunity. I'm thankful for whoever came up with that idea. That is wonderful.
It was a collaboration between the deputy town manager Lisa Garcia and myself and Florence High School staff.
Good, good job. I'm sure they can teach us some things, too.
Actually, thanks go out to the budget committee, because I believe it was the budget committee's idea, and thanks to the council for funding our ability to have interns from high school kids.
Yeah, great job. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good. Always good to have programs like this that work.
Right.
Okay, I've seen any other questions? Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Item B, proclamation declaring October 16th through the 22nd as National Friends of the Library Week. If the mayor would like to come down, I'll read the declaration. I think Ms. Webster from the Friends of the Library is here to receive.
National Friends of the Library Week proclamation, whereas Friends of the Florence Public Library Incorporated raise money that enables our library to move forward from good to great, providing resources for additional programming, much-needed equipment, support for children's summer reading, and special events throughout the year. And whereas work from the Friends highlights an ongoing basis of fact, our library is a cornerstone of the community, providing opportunities for all to engage in joy and lifelong learning and connect with thoughts and ideas of others from ages past to the present. And whereas the Friends understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and advocate to ensure that our library gets the resources it needs to provide wide variety of services to all ages, including in access to print, electronic materials, along with expert assistance and research, resource advisory, and children's services. And whereas the Friends gift their time and commitment to the library, sets an example how volunteerism leads to a positive civic engagement and the betterment of our community. Now and therefore be resolved that Tom J. Rankin, Mayor of the Town of Florence, proclaims October 16th through the 22nd, 2016, as National Friends of the Libraries Week in Florence, Arizona, and urges everyone to join the Friends of the Library and thank them for what they do to make our library and community so much better.
Emily, come forward, please. On behalf of the town council, myself, and Rose, and I think that -- there she is, she sits over there. This is something that I believe is very important. You put up with us before we had you a decent library to work in. We have a beautiful facility right now. You all are helping with everything that's going on, and we really appreciate that. And that's what citizenship is about, Florence, Arizona, and people jumping in and doing a good job. And personally, I know you guys have been doing a good job, because I talk to Rose every once in a while, okay? Well, Mary, again, on behalf of the town council and myself, thank you very much for the job, and take it back to your members and let them know it also. You want to say something?
Thank you very much. On behalf of the Friends of the Library, we are pleased to do this for the town. We're excited about how we can support the library, and we do urge everybody to join us. Thank you.
Well, thank you. No, it's thanking to you. Again, thank you very much. We'll just take a picture here then.
Item number C, presentation from the 150th Advisory Ad Hoc Committee. Mr. Mayor and Mr. Hughes?
I'm here. Good evening, Mayor, council members. We're coming up on the end of 2016, so we've been meeting on and off throughout the year to talk about the different ways we can celebrate and raise awareness of the Town of Florence's 150th anniversary. And we had a meeting a couple weeks ago. Not a whole lot of folks were able to make that meeting, but that's okay, because we're on, like I said, the home stretch, so we know what's going on. We've been working with people throughout the year, and we hope we can wrap this up with a -- go out with a bang on the 31st. But upcoming town events, I'm going to give you just a brief overview, and then Ally's going to go into the meat of things, because we all know that she does the bulk of everything. She does a great job doing that, so. But we've got the Florence Carnival. This is going to be a five-day carnival on the 27th through the 31st. Halloween Fright Fest on Monday the 31st. Junior Parata Parade on the Saturday, November 26th. Christmas on Main is December 2nd, and then, like I said, we're going to wrap up at the New Year's Eve Block Party on December 31st. We did want to make folks aware of some other events that are coming up in town, not necessarily related to the 150th, but certainly a good time to celebrate everything that's Florence, and that's the Homecoming Parade this Friday on Main Street. Something that's interesting, and I know a few of the council members were at last year, Pony Express on November 5th is coming through, and Ally will maybe touch on that a little bit. And then Anthem Celebrates the Arts on November 12th. So just some other events that are going on, just so everybody knows, there's a lot happening here in town. With that, I'll turn it over to Ally to kind of talk about some of the details of some of these things coming up, and if you have any questions, you can ask her along the way.
Ally?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Yeah, our first event coming up is the Carnival. That's going to be October 27th through the 31st. They're going to -- it's going to be a little bit smaller than last year. The same company wasn't interested in coming out again this year. So we reached out to a new company, and they are going to be here in the 27th through 31st. About six rides, a couple games, food for the community.
You needed -- Ally?
Yeah.
Pull that mic down towards you just a little bit too, honey. There you go.
The next event is our Halloween Carnival, or our Halloween Fright Fest. That's going to be on Halloween night. We have 20 game booths in the outfield, a corn maze that we're getting from an inflatable company. The credit union is going to be running the costume contest for us this year, and the women's club is going to be doing the pumpkin carving contest. Also have food vendors there as well. It's a great event for all the kids. We're looking forward to great attendance this year again. The Junior Parata Parade, we've reached out to 80 new participants this year. We're hoping to get a better turnout for the parade. Our goal is to get at least 50 parade entries. So we've reached out to all those people. We've also reached out to all the people who have participated in this event in the past. So that event will start at 10 o'clock with the parade, and then the rodeo will be going on at the rodeo grounds as well. The Christmas on Main Street event, we are doing the same with that. It'll be spread up and down Main Street, from 12th down to Ruggles. We're going to be having pictures with Santa, pony rides for the kids. We're encouraging all the businesses on Main Street to get involved with this event and open their doors for that. And then the light parade will conclude the night, and that'll begin at 8 o'clock. And then the last but not least is our New Year's Eve Block Party. On this map, you can see that we're planning on having two beer gardens. One will be at The Legion, and then one will be down at Cocopelli Moon. The -- everything in between that will be very family-oriented, inflatables for the kids, and different kid entertainment going on. In the two beer gardens, we're working with The Legion and Cocopelli to bring in some entertainment, and we'll have a stage at both of those locations. And then to conclude the night, we plan on having a fireworks show. And I'll turn it back over to Brian.
Thank you, Ally. And just as a reminder, we did have quite a few sponsors step up this year. Pulte, Country Thunder, Geo, Sun Power were probably our big ones, and then we did receive lots of other funds from some of the smaller logos. There you see APS, Taco Bell, Main Street Family Practice. And that doesn't include some of the other businesses that stepped up and just sponsored individual events. I don't know who they all are, but I know we've had some that just wanted to be involved with movies in the park. We've had some that just wanted to be involved with -- SRP, for instance, gave us $5,000 towards the Fourth of July event, so. But these sponsors here, in particular, definitely focused on the 150th as a whole. So we want to thank them and support them throughout the year. Just a reminder, our financial summary, our revenues, $23,000, just again from that group, doesn't include all the other ones that we received for individual sponsorships that helps offset the costs. We've spent a little bit on banners, merchandise, marketing, and then we've got some of these future events, Carnival and the Block Party, that we're working on still to kind of eat up the rest of those funds. Lastly, we just want to remind folks that if you want to get some commemorative memorabilia merchandise, we've got Tefers, mouse pads, coffee mugs, and the banners that are up on Main Street and up in the Anthem area are still for sale as well. If you want to get one of those, hang it in your business or in your garage, those are available. We'll be taking them down after the first of the year. So lots of stuff happening still. We encourage everyone to be involved. If anybody wants to help out in any of those remaining events, we certainly could use your help, especially New Year's Eve. We really want to have a good time on that one. So with that, if anybody has any questions, Ally and I will be happy to answer them.
Anybody have any questions? You know, I've been promoting this every place I can go to get people to come down, because the family orientation on New Year's, not being in an area where there's no alcoholic beverages served, there will be areas for alcoholic beverages, but have a family outing to begin the -- end the 150th year and begin our 151st year. So, and I hope to be around for the 200th, but I don't know. But that's just everybody promoted as much as you can, get people down. I know they're already making arrangements for their parties and everything like that. But to come down and -- you're going to have fire pits along Main Street so people can stay warm?
Still working out the details, but we'll have something for folks to warm.
We're going to have some -- it's going to be a little cooler, so people with small children, they do need some warmth and everything like that. Are you going to separate out the bouncies, or are you just going to have them along Main Street, or how are you planning on that?
We plan on doing that similar to Road to Country Thunder, where they were in the, I believe it was Hocke's Square. So we plan on putting them there again, or nearby.
And we're going to have that area fenced off where the kids can't get out, and we'll have people there watching their kids, so if the people want to go someplace else, their kids can play in there, and they'll be safe.
Yes.
Thank you. But again, we just need to sponsor it. We just need to get the word out to the people to get them down here for the 150th birthday party. And we've got another meeting coming up this month?
Probably, yes, I believe the fourth Wednesday, and that'll be probably our last meeting before we -- for the year.
Okay. So if anybody would like to attend, we'll be here. If there's any other question, Brian, Ally, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or a member of the public objects to the time -- at the time that the agenda is called. Item A, approval of purchase of traffic signal equipment from Sierra Transportation and Technologies in an amount not to exceed $69,416.43. Item B, approval of the Coolidge Florence Elks Lodge Special Event Liquor License Application to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses Control for the Sun City Anthem private event to be held on October 21st, 2016. Item C, authorization to enter into a contract with Creative Paving Solutions LLC for sandblasting and ceiling improvement on Main Street between Ruggles and 12th Street in an amount not to exceed $40,000. Item D, authorization to enter into a lease agreement between the Town of Florence and Wiegand Law Offices PLC for the Bruning Camp Building. Item E, proclamation declaring October 2016 as National Community Planning Month. Item F, approval of the September 6th and September 19th, 2016 council minutes. Item G, receive and file the following board and commission minutes. One, June 29, 2016, and August 31, 2016 Historic District Advisory Commission. Item Two, June 15, 2016 Library Advisory Board Minutes. Item Three, July 7, 2016 Planning and Zoning Commission Minutes.
And so consent agenda, does any member of the council have anything they'd like taken off the consent agenda?
I'd like to pull the -- item G, the June 29, 2016 H-TAC Minutes.
So item G will be taken off the consent agenda? Any other?
G-I. Item I under G, just the June 29 minutes for the Historic District.
Okay. So we'll take up item G-I, the first meeting of the Historic District Advisory Commission. Does any member of the audience have anything they'd like taken off the consent agenda? Seeing no movement, we need a motion?
I'll make a motion, but we approve the consent agenda with the exception of G-I or G-One.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item G-One. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a question. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I would just like for the minutes in that particular meeting to reflect, be specific about the plaque that was hung in the American Legion building.
You want to amend -- have the minute amended?
That's what I just said, yes. I would like for the minutes to reflect, be specific about the plaque that was hung in the American Legion Historic Building. I don't -- it doesn't really matter how it's worded, but I would like for people to know what the plaque was for, and so the plaque.
We will add the title of the plaque plus the exact wording on the plaque into the minute.
Thank you.
Anybody have any discussion on that?
That being said, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the June 29 Historic District Advisory Commission with the amendment to the --
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent item G-One.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The way that that item was pulled, it wasn't just the one meeting, it was physically all of item I, so the motion should reflect the amendment to June 29, but also include August 31.
And I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the Historic District Advisory Committee with the June 29 meeting reflecting the addendum, and also approve the August 31 meeting.
Now, who seconded?
I second. I approve it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Agenda item G-One, including both dates, with the corrections to the minutes to be added. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
New business. Item A, discussion approval or disapproval of the contract with AJP Electric for construction of future traffic signal to be located at the intersection of Hunt Highway and Addaway Road in an amount not to exceed $101,520.90. Chris Solis.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The item approval tonight is for the, essentially, the labor for the intersection improvements at Hunt Highway and Addaway. That would include the construction of the underground foundations for the poles, the setting of the poles, the mast arms, the running of the wire, the installation of the conduit. The procurement of that was all handed under a JOC approved through Maricopa County, and that has been reviewed by our in-house legal, and we're purchasing off of that agreement.
JOC stands for?
Job Order Contracting. I apologize.
Job Order Contracting is a special procurement method under state of Arizona law as alternate project delivery.
Another word, piggybacking on it.
Piggybacking on another city's contract that it has for similar work.
Which would save us some money under that than having to go out for bid and just wait and see what we get. Now, you kind of want to explain what's going on out there so the folks will know exactly and the time limit, if you have one.
Yes, sir. The idea originally was to purchase the temporary traffic signals, the trailer signals out there from Penal County. Penal County purchased those approximately, I think, in 2006, 2007. They paid in excess of $200,000 for those trailers, and they are now able to be purchased for about $150,000. They were not interested in selling the trailers and taking that big of a loss, understanding the market values, no longer what they paid for it. They informed the Town of Florence that they would not sell them to us to purchase our own. At that point, I decided to look at two avenues. One, the temporary trailers, and then one, a future signal that would accommodate the ability to grow into the future. The trailers, as today, were actually hit by something. So we understand that they were actually hit hard enough where they were moved, and now are a little bit out of whack, and we went out there and adjusted. Police report was filed, as well as Penal County was out there. This is not a permanent solution, and I'm glad that this kind of happened on the same day to show that it's not a permanent solution. So we decided to move forward on a permanent traffic signal that will allow a right-turn lane to be installed in the future northbound off of Addaway, and justify it as far north as we can within our current right-of-way to allow future widening of Hunt Highway. Improvements to the intersection will include video detection, or vehicular detection, I should say. It's not necessarily video detection, but vehicular detection. So it will improve the level of service, LOS, of the intersection. That'll, again, that'll help people expedite traffic in the off-hours. We'll be able to program it throughout the day for different minimum green times in certain directions. We'll be able to adjust this. It's fully programmable. The signal will eventually -- will be coming back to the council for an IGA with Penal County to do maintenance of that signal. We're using a Siemens controller, the same one the county uses, so they can maintain it, the same poles that the county's using in case there is an accident. same poles that the county's using in case there is an accident. A lot of the hardware is very, very standard for the industry. We didn't do anything fancy, and, uh, essentially the, this first phase, this is as approved in the CIP, this is the first phase of that, and initially, the traffic signal will not include any additional roadway improvements. There will have to be a guard rail installed north of the intersection to provide clear zone, essentially, protection because of the poles within that clear zone, but there will be no roadway portion of this project. We will be working with, um, Skid. On widening the road at a way to provide a northbound right turn lane which will facilitate essentially the ability to remove those right turns from the left turn, which today you cannot do, and that is a bottleneck.
Right. Don, what do you think?
This is great.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Chris is being exceptionally humble. Let me, um, let me kind of explain to you what went down here because he's not saying it. Um, this signal has been programmed in the CIP for quite some time and was held up due to some challenges regarding right-of-way in this area. Uh, we are up against a severe deadline in terms of construction of a brand-new traffic signal, meaning that the county said we can use their temporary traffic signals until the end of December. Um, he's come up with a way, uh, to not only be able to procure design and construct in an incredibly tight timeframe, uh, but also a way to very efficiently and effectively construct a signal without absorbent costs and still allow for the ability to do future improvements in this vicinity. I think, but most impressively, he's come up with a design concept that does not impact those right-of-ways where we were challenged before. So all these improvements for this signal, which is, has an expandable ability for the roadway underneath it, will be placed in our existing right-of-ways, how they exist today. And, and when it goes up and is built, uh, it's gonna look a lot different than what you traditionally see as a traffic signal, but will function, uh, quite well, uh, for the three legs of the intersection. So, um, it's a pretty impressive project. I'm sure that Chris would like share, like to share more with you, uh, in, uh, in the future regarding that.
As far as the schedule goes, uh, I think that one of the things that we started off with, we started off with an incredibly aggressive timeline for the design. Uh, I've been working with the construction company before the approvals of this to make sure that when we approved this, that they would have enough time in their minds to get it done. So both the design and the construction crew were not just chosen for their, their qualifications, but for their ability to meet the deadlines. Hopefully, we'll be turning dirt somewhere late in November, and AJP has essentially signed on for, to get the signal done in 30 days, if all the hardware is here. So that, that is the importance of approving all the items to get the hardware, um, I guess, procured. Um, but I guess through all of the contacts over the years that we've been able to, to create and the relationships, a lot of this, as soon as we put in the order, they've been stocking this knowing that this signal is coming. So I guess years of hard work have allowed us to, to kind of build relationships where they understand that this is coming, and the items are kind of already sort of in the loop, not purchased, but in the loop. So pre-ordered, they're stocking them, and the idea is to turn this signal on, like I said, before the deadline of December 31st. One thing that I, I tell people a lot of times about is with AJP, we had a signal that we did in an incredibly short deadline that we turned on the day before school on a Sunday in the rain, the day before school. These are contractors that if they say they can get it done, they will get it done. They will put the hours in, they will work Saturdays, they will do whatever, they will commit to a deadline, and they will get it done. So I think that's another important reason, again, to get this done, to make sure, understanding that if it's January 1st, Penale County's not gonna hook up the trailers and leave. But the idea is to get this done.
Can, can you get this information to the ADOT on how they can put a light up?
There's a reason why I don't worry about that. It's, yeah, we, we...
I mean, we've been waiting for the one down here on Diverge Dam Road in 79 for four or five years now. If we can put it up in less than two months, it seems like they should be able to do the same thing. Chris, thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
Well, I, I'd just like to compliment Chris because the last time this was presented to us, it was gonna take two, three years to get this done, and I just can't thank him enough for what he's done here and for particularly my neighbors who use that intersection daily. So, thank you very much, Chris.
Becky?
I'd like to commend you, Mr. Solis, for the way that you bid this contract out. Uh, it's wonderful that you're looking out for the Town of Florence, giving us the most, um, uh, expertise in this field and getting this project done efficiently, but more than anything, saving also and concerned about the taxpayer's dollar. I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question. Is this signaling going to be solar-powered, and if not, where is the power coming from?
The power currently is north of the intersection. There's the, uh, there's a guy wire that comes down right there in that last pole is right where our meter pedestal battery backup unit will be deployed right there. So we do, we've already have an agreement that's been signed by ED2 on the design and the construction of the service, and everything, everything is taken care of in line with that. It's...
To be clear with the public, one of the challenges with the signal, if it was under a traditional design, is how would get power to all four legs of the intersection, not only the right-of-way concerns. Chris's design utilizes the ability to get the power, uh, from the same side where it's provided, i.e. the ED2 line. So, as you can tell, there's a lot of thought that's gone into, uh, the design.
Thank you very much.
And I'll just say, just from an aesthetics viewpoint, I'm, I'm glad to see that, 'cause all that stuff out there is so ugly at that intersection. It looks like a big junk pile with those temporary lights, so I'm glad to see this, and thank you for getting it, being cost-effective as well.
Thank you.
Chair?
I, I did of that. Um, I wanted to compliment you on the cost savings. The fact that it is only $101,520.90 is far better than the $150,000 that Penale, or $200,000 that they wanted, even though it's only valued at $150. I also appreciate how you addressed the fact of the timing at the light, because that was a great concern that was brought forward. So thank you for that as well. I appreciate how you take your time, you research it, and you move forward, and the timing in this is definitely appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lee, if I understand right, Chris, the total cost is gonna be running around $150,000, somewhere in there for the, for the material and the labor?
We do have two items. We have the $69,000 and then the $101,000, and those have, as indicated in the cost estimate, which I believe is labeled as Exhibit 1, those have large contingencies in case the design changes.
Right.
The design is not done as of today. We're literally in the process. We specked out all the equipment, understanding that the pole could get moved two feet here, two feet here, two feet here, but it, it's locked in essentially. But the idea is just in case, we wanted to have that ability, we didn't wanna miss the date, so there is a, there is a cushion in there. So these, these prices will come down, but yes, there are multiple items.
But to be clear to the public, at the last meeting, you did a contract to design, and then there's a contract to purchase equipment, and there's a contract to construct. Uh, the signal itself is going to cost more than $200,000 in total, but that is very inexpensive as compared to a traditional signal, which can be from $250,000 to $400,000 in, in today's dollars. Um, we will see what the, the signal that, uh, Mayor, you brought forward is going to cost, but I would guess it will be around $350,000, the one that's gonna be constructed over here on 79.
And Chris, what is the traffic count out there? Do we have a traffic count out there at that intersection?
Yes, sir, we do. I, I don't know the exact throughput, but I do know that in the mid-morning, it's over 100 left turns, that's the important number, is the left turns off of, um, Addaway, and then for about four hours straight, it's over 300 left turns an hour, and that's, that's the critical number there is those left turns, 'cause those are impeding, those are the, um, the conflict movement right there.
Right.
So if we were to just block off Addaway, the, you know, you could free-flow on Hunt Highway very adequately, but it is the 300-plus. It did meet two individual signal warrants. It's not even just one, it's, it met two individual warrants. I do believe the signal will have a substantial increase again in that level of service.
More people that are using Hunt and Addaway, more necessity for that light, or traffic control device.
Yes.
Don't call it a stoplight. ADOT doesn't like that. Any other question? Then we need a motion.
I make a motion to approve the award of a contract to AJP Electric Company for the construction of a future traffic signal to be located at the intersection of Hunt Highway and Addaway Road in an amount not to exceed $101,520.90.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the award to contract to AJP Electric Incorporated for the construction of the future traffic signal to be located at the intersection of Hunt Highway and Addaway Road in an amount not to exceed $101,520.90. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Chris.
Item B, Resolution Number 1602-16, discussion, approval or disapproval of a resolution to Town of Florence, Penale County, Arizona, amending the Town of Florence Fiscal Year 2016-17 Employee Classification Plan. Scott Barber.
And ranking members of the council, we're asking this evening for this adjustment to our classification plan that you approved as a part of the budget for this year. I'm gonna divide it into two pieces. The first piece is that, uh, earlier this year, the Department of Labor, the U.S. Department of Labor announced changes to the rules regarding the Fair Labor Standards Act, Standards Act, and that's been around since, um, back in the 30s that does a number of things, includes speech to the issue of overtime compensation. And, um, it was made applicable to governmental entities in 1984 as a result of litigation in the, uh, the city of San Antonio. And so we've dealt with the FLSA for a number of years. In terms of overtime, the particular law allows for certain tests to be performed to determine whether someone could be exempt from the overtime provisions. In other words, they're able to work more than 40 hours in a seven-day work period before overtime is due then. And there are a number of tests that are performed, and one of the gateways to those tests is a salary level, and so you had to meet that first before you could form other tests. Over the years and prior to the DOL issue, DOL issuing their new rules, that threshold was $23,660 a year. So employee had to meet that threshold, and then you'd go on to the other tests to determine whether or not they could be designated as exempt from the overtime provisions of FLSA. And the, uh, the president proposed some new rules, and the Department of Labor did issue those rules to be effective on December 1st of this year. And that raises essentially, uh, the most important thing it does is raises that threshold to $47,476 per year. It was a review period and a comment period and what have you, but the rules have been released, and they're gonna go into effect, as everything stands the way it is today on December 1st. Uh, the fact of the matter is, there are, I think, 21 states that have filed legal action to stay that, and I, I believe that legislation has been passed at the House of Representatives, which also would do that. But we, as an employer, like every other employer, needs to move ahead with the idea that these rules are going to go into effect on December 1st. We took a conservative implementation perspective looking at the entry level rate for all of our position classifications, and as a result of that, this evening, we're asking for a change to five of our classifications. One of those currently is not in use, and the other four involve just four employees. So with your action this evening, effective on December 1st, will come in compliance with the law, and those individuals, those, uh, those classifications, and practically speaking, those individuals will now be eligible for overtime compensation. And as I commented in the fiscal impact section there, um, that is the case, but our town manager communicated with all of our department directors, and certainly those that are impacted, that he expects that we'll be able to, uh, to operate within the realm of, uh, of tools that are available to us management-wise and mitigate that possibility. So that's the first half of the recommendation, changing the classification under the Fair Labor Sanders Act on five of our employee classes from not, from exempt to non-exempt. The second part of the recommendation this evening involves some work that Public Works Director Solis and I have been doing over the last several months, and that is, um, looking at some things that were done prior to his arrival, and then some adjustments that he's had, uh, has made over the last several months that he's been here. And you'll notice in there that, that we've been working on some alignment issues. Couple of the things were put in place by the town manager prior to his arrival. Several others, uh, are recommendations that he and I have arrived at in relationship to moving, um, moving positions around within the organization. Anytime a department director comes to the HR office and says, "I'm not looking for new resources, I just need to move some things around to get where we need to be," I pay attention to those things. And so I've been working with Chris and he with, uh, with my office in making these things happen, and the resulting recommendation this evening is before you. And just to run through them rather quickly, um, in the issue of water and wastewater operation within the Public Works Department, prior to this recommendation, we've just had a utility superintendent. Uh, this basically speaks to separation that was accomplished by our town manager prior to Chris's arrival, and that is we're kind of separating out water and wastewater. And so we're changing utility superintendent to water superintendent, and then the individual who's been our senior plant operator, uh, and since January, has really been acting as our wastewater superintendent, uh, in that role. So we're creating two new classifications, and, uh, in terms of budget impact, there is none with that. Then secondarily to that, looking at the issue of facility maintenance, and specifically in those, uh, things that have to be contracted out, uh, because we're not able to handle them in-house, um, based on our, again, coordination together, we're proposing to create a new facilities maintenance specialist classification. This is being accomplished through a transfer of a vacant position from Public Works Administration over into facilities and reclassifying it to facilities maintenance specialist. The idea there is that we are seeking someone with specific expertise of HVAC, um, we're cutting out a little bit there, HVAC, electrical, plumbing, and what have you, and, um, we will be doing, uh, we propose to do an internal recruitment to fill that position because it is a vacant position, we're moving from one area to another. And then finally, looking at the fleet services operation of the town, uh, we're proposing to move a position that is filled, uh, from the street division, maintenance worker one, over to facilities, or to fleet, that is, and create a new classification called Fleet Services Supervisor. And the proposal is to reclassify that position and promote the incumbent. Uh, again, these are basically a situation where we've had individuals in temporary assignments, and, uh, it's worked out really, really well. Again, the, uh, the first part of the recommendation, um, has potential budgetary impact, but under the direction of the town manager, we don't think it will have a practical impact. Secondarily, the, uh, the recommendations are all being handled well within the parameters of the approved Public Works Department budget. Net-net, at the end of the day, we'll end up with several vacancies, and actually a couple of vacancies in the street division that represent promotional opportunities. Chris and I have talked about those, and what he wants to do is stand down on those, make these adjustments, operate for a while, and see what happens. I wanna stress, this is not a departmental reorganization, this is simply a realignment of resources, positions, and people within the department, and Chris arrived at the end of the budget process. So normally, this might have taken place in the budget process because he arrived so late, we weren't able to do that. So that's why, one of the reasons he and I have been working on that. With that discussion or that description of what we're proposing, I'll stand to answer any questions you might have.
You remember, the council, have any question?
I, I have a question about the financial impact. Maybe this is better for Brent, but, uh, these positions, uh, appear to be positions that require emergency-type efforts occasionally, and so it looks like there may be overtime required on these positions.
Councilmember Anderson, that's, that is, uh, that's potentially the case. Uh, the fact of the matter is that overtime is always a focus in our departmental operations that require that, as the budget committee can attest to. There was quite a, quite a discussion about overtime budgeted in, in our departments. Um, again, the, uh, our department director's staff has received specific direction from our town manager to use the tools that are in our management toolbag, particularly in the area of flex time, and that is being able to flex off hours, recognize that extra hours are worked, but, but don't come in until late tomorrow within the work period that we designate. So that is a tool that's available and that we're going to use. In the case where overtime has to be paid, again, that's going to be handled within the parameters of the departmental budget.
Thank you. I'm gonna do my best to add to what Scott said. I think it's important for those folks watching on TV and in the audience tonight, what is essentially being done by... What is essentially being done by HR and Public Works is an analysis of our existing resources, both financially and in terms of human capital, and figuring out how to properly allocate that to become more efficient and more effective, which you hear me talk about all the time. In this case, I think it's important to highlight that not adding positions and not asking for more money outside of the existing budget, but realigning within our means and becoming more efficient and effective. The other thing I would like to highlight is Chris and Scott did a substantial amount of research in terms of the monies that were being spent on outside consultants to do work, particularly in the Facilities Department. And little did I know, but we actually had a staff person inside of our existing department that was, has been able to serve in an interim role, who is a certified HVAC person, and has done a lot of the type of work that we were hiring consultants on a weekly basis to perform in the town. So what he has uncovered is the ability to utilize our existing resources more efficiently and to realign to that effect based on a vacancy that already exists in the department.
Thanks. Does any member of the council have any questions, any others? Okay, hearing none, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number Sixteen-O-Two-Dash-Sixteen, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, adopting the revised Town of Florence Fiscal Year 2016-2017 Employee Classification Plan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Sixteen-O-Two-Dash-One-Six. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Brent?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I have a few items tonight. The first one is to announce to the council and the public that, as usual, the Florence Police Department is very involved in supporting the Special Olympics. And this fall, they are going to have a new program that's going to be during November, which you probably know, entities all over the United States have Movember, where folks that typically, fire and policemen, who can't grow facial hair, do special programs to grow facial hair for charity. Specifically in this case, it's the Police Department, who is going to work through a program to grow facial hair and to sponsor and provide charitable donations to the Special Olympics. And a couple of the officers have actually come by and seen me, including one today who thanked me for the ability to participate in the event and how important it was to support the Special Olympics.
Does that include the chief?
I don't know. You get a donut? Okay. He said it, I didn't. The second thing is, is everybody aware of the GAIN event that's going to be held October twenty-second? GAIN stands for Getting Arizona Involved in Neighborhoods. And the Town of Florence, along with Anthem, is going to be holding event October twenty-second, 2016, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. at Anthem Community Park Ampli Theater. The event is to make our community aware of the benefits that the Town of Florence and the Town of Florence Police Department has to offer to the community. There will be informational boosts, crime prevention tips, alcohol and drug awareness, kids fingerprinting, neighborhood watch organization, fire department information, canine demonstrations, and much more. A number of other entities are going to participate in GAIN, including Casa Gran PD, Coolidge PD, Pinal County Sheriff's Office, our National Guard, as well as the Border Patrol. There are a number of businesses who are also going to be involved, so please come Next, and I think she's gone. I wanted to bring to everybody's attention that American City and County Magazine announced via their website on September twenty-sixth, the winners of the Igniting the Flames Award for Young Professionals. One of our own, Ally Feliz, was nominated and finished in the top five out of thirty entities. If you go to americancityandcounty.com, bonus content, it has the Igniting the Flame Award discussions, as well as a bio on Ally. And I know she was here earlier, it's too bad she didn't know I was going to read this tonight. So next time you see Ally, congratulate her on making the top five. Next is an announcement. The Bureau of Justice Assistance is pleased to inform you that your agency will receive an award under Fiscal Year 2016 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Solicitation. These funds have been posted to your account in the BVP system. A complete list of Fiscal Year 2016 BVT awards is available at www.ojpusdoj.gov. So thank you to our grants team, as well as the Police Department, for applying for that grant and receiving that grant. Chief, can you tell us how many vests that accounts for?
Mayor, council, we generally are trying to purchase up to four vests a year, and those are expensive, they run around a thousand dollars apiece, but they're a very important piece of equipment for officers. They wear them daily, and they have about a five-year lifespan, and so we're constantly upgrading and changing those out as they expire. So it's a really good program, and it certainly makes us a little safer out there on the street in today's world.
My last item, as council knows, I frequently get emails and positive comments about our staff and the job that they're doing on a daily basis. But last week, I received an email that I thought was really cool. It kind of touched me because although I do not know the lady who sent this email, I see this lady all the time. And so when I got this email, I immediately was able to put a face with the name. "Dear Mr. Billingsley, I'd like to take a minute of your day to thank you and to compliment your Public Works employees that work downtown, on the streets, and at the parks." It's now time to clarify, it's not just Public Works, it's also the Parks and Recreation employees. "I am a Florence resident, and every morning I go for walks throughout the community with my newborn baby. Every time I see a city employee, I'm greeted with a hello and a good morning. Being the mom of three young children, a simple greeting of hello and their presence gives me peace of mind that my children and I are safe on our outings in our community. Your employees have a great presence in our community, are always seen working hard, paying attention, and looking out for the community. Thank you for your time, and please pass this along to the appropriate town personnel." That's all I have.
Thank you. Do you remember the public have anything in the call to the public that they'd like to say at this time? Seeing a moment, we're closed, call to the public, call to the council, Bill?
No, I just want to say, it looks like we're moving forward fairly quickly on the beautification on Main Street. I'm glad to see they're moving right along. They've got most of the lights up, I think, now, or almost all of them, I think. Just a matter of getting the other lights down. Hopefully, it'll just keep moving as fast as it is, has been, but that's all I have.
Okay, Karen?
I just want to add another event that I'd like to encourage everyone to attend, and that is on Friday, October twenty-first, at the Anthem Grill, our police officers will be conducting a tip-a-cop event. And so anyone who would like to come out and have dinner, you will be served by and bussed by our officers in uniform, and a lot of my friends and neighbors will be there, so we're looking forward to it.
Thank you.
And the benefit is for Special Olympics. It's from four to eight p.m. Sorry.
That's okay, that's helpful. I don't have anything tonight.
Thank you. John?
I don't have anything.
Becky?
Yes, I have two things. First, I attended the movie in the park on Saturday night with my grandsons, and there was a lot going on that night, because there was a benefit going on. But it was, I thought, was very well-run. Coco was there, everybody had a great time, and the movie was really cute, wonderful, and my grandsons had a ball, so I thank you for that. The second thing is, I want to thank you, Chris. This morning, well, actually, starting on Friday night, I had a problem where I thought that I was in fright night at my house. My house sounded like a heartbeat going at different times of the night, and on Saturday night, it was all night-long. So this morning, I called your department. David Hills answered the phone and directly gave me to Tim Wayne Scott, who appropriately sent Peter Kelm out to my house, and within fifteen minutes, he had resolved the problem. My neighbor's meter had gone crazy, and my house was in a heartbeat mode. So thank you very much, I appreciate it. I just want to tell everyone that our Public Works Department, and especially the Water Wastewater Division, who I am very proud of over these years, is a wonderful asset to the town, and they're very efficient, concerned, and didn't think that I was a crazy old lady.
I won't say nothing on that, Beck. Karen?
I do. I was also a movie in the park, and it was fabulous. I would love to see a grant where we could have our own big-screen movie projector, so this way we can have them more often, because while they are well-attended, if we can have them on a more routine basis, I think that's something that's great for our communities. Coco did a great job as well, he was out there getting all the crowd excited. We saw some, you know, our very young community doing some gymnastics, and it was wonderful. Ally went Facebook Live on it. I also want to thank Chris. Chris came out to Florence Gardens this past Saturday and provided the residents with an update of projects that have happened, projects that are happening, and to listen to their concerns. And I think that's great, that we go out, we talk with the members of the community, especially about what we're doing, what we have done. Lastly, just to give an update out in public, I talked with Brent earlier, and he helped put this together, just so it's one-hundred percent accurate. There have been a lot of questions regarding the potential flood zones discrepancies in Anthem discussed at our last council meeting, and I want everybody to know that our town manager and town engineer are diligently communicating with Baxter Design Group, Pinal County Flood Control, and Pulte to confirm and address the concerns that were voiced. It is our goal to resolve the issue working with Anthem's design engineer and Pulte. The town has requested and is currently awaiting confirmation from Pulte as to sponsoring an informational session to provide potentially affected residents and the town with an update. So we are taking this very seriously and moving forward expedited. So thank you all.
Just let people realize that Saturday night, we had a benefit for a young lady, for Gabby, out at the Elf Club. It was so well-attended, it exceeded anything that they anticipated. The Posse was out there with three-hundred steaks. They opened up dinner at three o'clock, at five o'clock, they were gone, at ten bucks a pop. A good meal for ten dollars, the Posse put on, was really great. I also found out before the night ended, they only had two kinds of beer left, that they had consumed almost all the beer that the Elf Club had on hand. So you can imagine how many people were out there. They had an auction that raised quite a bit of money for the family, which was great. Gabby was there, she had been feeling a little bit ill earlier in the evening, but she came out, and she went back in later, but she was there to see everybody that was there to support her, and it was a great mixture of, I don't want to make anybody on the council mad, but young, medium age, and elderly. I'm not elderly, but the, and also a mixture of Coolidge and Florence, when no trouble gave, you know, I'm sorry. But it was really a great, great event for a young girl here in town that really, her family needed the help. And I think that just shows what Florence is, and Coolidge, because Coolidge was really involved in it. People from all over, I know there's some people from Kansas that came in for it. I think that's the farthest way I heard of anybody coming in for it, but they were here, some people from Texas. So it was great, it was a good time, no trouble. It was really fun to be out there. As to what Tara was saying about the situation in Anthem with the flood zone, there was information put out that I should have wrote a letter, and in the paper I responded to those comments. It was not the town's responsibility to do that, it's between the buyer of the home and the seller of the property. The town cannot become and be held liable for giving out information that we don't have any control over as far as the Lomar maps are done. So it just needs to be explained that, yeah, once we found out about it, we started digging into it. It was something that we were not aware of until somebody that was trying to sell their home, and then we started working on it to find out the best solutions that can be handled. And I think in talking with Brent, we're on the right track. Again, it will be Pulte's decision when they want to put together a meeting, and we will be there in attendance to answer any question on behalf of the town. But again, the town's liability would not, will not allow us to be interpreting maps, especially on Lomars. Coming up, this current event, current event, right? Right, Lisa? That's what the open meeting law says. Homecoming. I guess, I forget how many years this is from high school. Do you remember, Jennifer? How many years? Boy, you didn't go to school here. But it's going to be a great weekend here, Friday, there will be the homecoming parade. I'm not real sure, I think it starts about one. They will also be down in the park, getting together. I guess there's a beer garden going on there, other events are going to be being held down at the park. So, and then the game, it's Friday night at seven o'clock. The Gophers, I think, are six and one now, seven and one. I thought it was, see, I'm a week behind, so we're trying to get current. But those kids, you should have seen them against Globe. I mean, poor Globe. I'm sorry, Brent. I can understand why you left. If that's the reason you left to come down here, that's great. But they manhandled Globe. But the one thing about Globe, they never gave up. They kept fighting and trying, they just were outmanned by the Gophers. And with that, go Gophers, and we need a motion.
Make a motion, we adjourn to executive session. We have a motion and a second to adjourn to executive session. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.